Oh, my bad.
John's on there.
He's out tonight.
Yeah. That's when we're gonna make eight oh seven.
Get that in the minutes.
Eight oh one. We need time to drive home.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
Seven thirty works for the superintendent today.
Last week tonight would be a problem.
I know.
We'll email them to you.
You called it. All right. Welcome everyone to the Wednesday, October thirtieth school board meeting.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any revisions to the agenda?
Nope.
Summary of non-public actions from October sixteenth, two thousand thirteen. Mr. Miller made a motion to approve the non-public minutes of October sixteenth, two thousand thirteen. As amended, Mr. Light seconded, motion carried five zero zero. Any presentations and recitations?
Nope.
Anyone have any correspondence?
I recall seeing any.
Do we have something from Jason?
No, no, I don't think so.
I think...
There was one.
Yeah, I got a...
Yeah.
Twenty thirty.
Was one of those remote things?
Last Wednesday, I don't know if it came late or early.
I mentioned that one. That was the, uh, the, um, air quality work. Yeah, nothing new.
Okay, that was last week then?
Yeah, that was last week.
Oh, okay. I thought that was this week. Never mind.
Uh, approval draft minutes?
Motion.
Motion?
I make a motion. Accept.
Leave a second.
Not yet.
Okay.
Trying to drag this out.
Three o'clock. Actually, it says, it says, "Non-public session was at nine thirty." Definitely wasn't nine thirty last week. Oh, not seven fifty-six. Just says nine thirty next to it. Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All who are in favor?
Aye.
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 Post, stay. Motion carries four zero zero. Committee in the forum?
Good evening. Jason Grete, eleven Perry Court. Last, at the last meeting, I, I asked a question as to whether or not the board was aware of, um, what was going on with, um, with the staff of the union, um, in response to Ms. Light's letter to the, uh, to the HLN. Um, and you stated you were aware. I was just, um, just a recommendation, um, as, uh, over the last week, I, again, I have had quite a number of, uh, conversations throughout town. People were, um, uh, the word is almost like shocked, kind of like a, you know, they's kind of zoned out and like, I don't understand that. Um, me personally, I think it'd be a, um, very good thing if, um, if the chair wrote a letter, uh, explaining, um, or taking, uh, perhaps just giving, given the board's view on that, um, to know, because you said you knew about it. Apparently, it's been going on since last spring. Uh, to me, a, uh, a conversation with the public saying, we're aware of it, um, you know, this is what we, you know, we're doing, not doing, you know, whatever, but, uh, something from those that, um...
I guess unfortunate, I, I'd be welcome to what the board says, but unfortunately, I think the letter would basically say, we're aware of it, we're in negotiations with the nations with the teachers.
I know that.
I don't know if we're on a, I wouldn't want to comment too strongly on one side of it.
Of course, because of bargaining in good faith and all that, that's not the point. I'm, I'm not saying pick a side. I'm just saying, e- even that would say, okay, we are aware of it, because people are like, what's the board doing about it? You know, and I'm like, well, that's kind of the point. There's not much they can do about it, because you have to bargain in good faith.
Yeah.
But still, yeah, they do want to hear from the board. Um, and so my, my point is, is it's just a matter of communicating and saying, we are. Not everybody watches this. Not everybody, you know, all they've seen is, is, uh, an HLN article. I wrote to the paper last week, you know, in what I thought, um, but who am I? My point is, is I, I do believe that the public would want to hear from the board reassuring them, um, you know, that things are going well or not, you know, you don't have to say they're not going well if they aren't aware, but I'm just saying is, you know, we got our handle on it, you know, because quite honestly, there's nothing to say that it continues, it doesn't continue. Should I be worried? Should I not be worried? You know, in my position, that's leadership, you know, you, I've got it, we've got it, you know, that kind of thing. So it's just a suggestion that, you know, you, you address it, rather than let something like that linger in the public's mind. Right? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Corbiel?
Robin Corbiel. Um, I'm actually not here, I'm a community member.
Oh.
I'm here as a UA teacher. Um, we are sponsoring our Veterans Day breakfast and ceremony again.
Okay.
The kids have created graphics that they, um, turned into invitations that we wanted to present to the school board and to Dr. Cochran tonight, and we're hopeful that some of you will be able to attend our ceremony. It's a, it's a nice breakfast and event each year, so, um, and the kids took some pride in their graphics. I'm proud of their graphics. I think they do a very nice job.
Eighth grade?
Again, no, this is seventh.
Is this seventh grade?
Again, this year, and these are all original graphics.
I'm hoping to be able to make it this time around.
Oh, they're all different.
They're all different.
Okay.
We can trade after.
Yeah, you can pull them up for, um, for the world to see, or at least Litchfield.
Does anybody want John's?
Um...
What's John say? Thank you for your service.
Yeah. But the kids do a really nice job, and they, it's all original artwork. They have to, to draw it or create it themselves, so they, they have some pride in it. But hopefully, you'll be able to attend and be a part of that ceremony with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I haven't got a meeting that morning. How long's the ceremony usually last?
Normally, we do, um, the breakfast first for the veterans, and then we do the ceremony, but because of some of the scheduling changes and, and art, you know, meeting those needs, we're gonna have the ceremony first and then the breakfast afterwards.
Thank you very much.
Same day as GMS. So you get breakfast and lunch.
Mm-hmm. If Campbell did a dinner, we'd be all safe.
Yeah.
The Veterans' Town is well taken care of.
Looking for a supper invite now?
And a lot of the food and stuff, like the, the kids make the muffins or the after-school programs, you know, so the, the UA teachers make some of the food, but some of the kids also try to contribute in different ways, so it's really a nice way to pull the ingredients together.
Cool. Superintendent's comments?
Yes, my apologies while I finish my typing. I want to make sure I get to the Remembrance Day event this year. Uh, I just wanted to respond to, to, uh, Mr. Grete's question and concern. I had some conversations with, uh, building administration. Building administration met individually with, uh, LEA building reps when the, uh, job action was taken. Um, LEA assured administration that, uh, they would fully comply with all, uh, aspects of the contract. And I asked the administrators to ensure that, that in fact, that did happen, and we spoke, uh, frequently during that time period, and they indicated that there was, they knew of no cases where contractual obligations were, were not fulfilled. There were some committees that LEA's, the LEA, uh, groups in each building decided they were optional, that they did not want to participate in. Uh, but again, those are not contractually obligated. Uh, but by and large, the, the, uh, from my perspective, the, well, when, when you're in negotiations, especially when you're in negotiations at a time when you're not under contract, there is a little bit different feel in the building. Uh, people are concerned, both on the administration's side and on the teacher's side. Most of the day, you go about your business and, you know, you enjoy your teaching or you enjoy your, your time in the classroom. And so while there was a, a tension there at times, when you walked in the building, you really couldn't feel the difference. I was assured that there were no people who were not participating in IEP meetings, who were not doing the things they normally do to fill the, you know, the entire scope of their job description and contract. But I, I think, you know, that, that, uh, it was done to, uh, make a point, um, you know. And I'm not going to speak for the LEA, but, uh, we did take it seriously. We did talk to administration. Administration were able to confirm, and I was able to communicate to the board that, you know, students' educational, uh, experience was not being compromised, and that, uh, other than, than some committees, quality teaching and good learning was still going on in classrooms.
Any school board comments?
The scoreboard looked very nice Friday night. It was almost bright enough that you needed sunglasses, even though the sun wasn't out, because it was actually all lit up, which was nice to see, so I wanted to congratulate Coach Patterson and whoever else he involved. I know Matt and the grounds guys were involved. Um, they had electrician and cranes and everything to get the scoreboard up, and, uh, I wanted to congratulate the high school on a great event on Friday night. But the football game, it was far more than a football game. There was, uh, many people there that had nothing to do with football, but it became a community event, so. I think it went over very well, albeit it was a bit chilly.
Any more school board member comments? How's the budget committee coming? Oh, yes.
So people know when we're...
Yep, while, while we're in comments, the invitation from the veterans, uh, breakfast.
Any veteran in, who lives in Litchfield, an invitation to them also.
Okay. To all veterans who live in Litchfield, you are cordially invited to Litchfield Middle School Veterans' Day Ceremony and Breakfast, which is Friday, November eighth. Uh, the ceremony will start at seven forty-eight AM in the LMS gymnasium, and breakfast will follow the, the ceremony. Please RSVP by Tuesday, November fifth, to the Litchfield Middle School, and the phone number is missing a number. It's four two four two one three something.
Three three.
Two one three three. Four two four two one three three.
Just start at one and dial out.
That invitation is extended to all veterans in Litchfield.
Um, budget committee?
They're not meeting until fourteen.
Oh, really? Are they down with the town?
Uh, there's still some voting to be done on.
Oh, but there's people, people away, so they couldn't...
Yeah.
Any other committees meet? Negotiations team met last night. We can discuss that some more in non-public.
And we were supposed to meet for building and grounds, but, um, we didn't have enough information available to us to require a, a full meeting, so we have postponed it. Um, new date to be determined.
I got to do some more work on it today, starting to put the package together, so I'm hoping in two to three weeks, we'll have enough to get a real handle around GMS, which is the first building that we're looking at. I do apologize for the late notice to the committee members, but I think they were very thankful for the found time.
Okay, we have a request for an additional para at CHS.
In the board packet is a description, uh, additional para, six-hour day. The description is, is, uh, there. This is supporting, uh, I believe, a single student primarily. And, uh, I think that's, that, number one is required by the IEP, number two, um, I think budgetarily, it's in, it's in the best interest of not just the, the student, but the district as well, to provide his level of support. Legally, it's required, but I think it, it's a good thing in, in other ways as well.
Do we need to approve this, or is this just something you do within your own budget?
I think we should probably approve it if it's an out-of-cycle position, even if it's...
She is requesting it, so...
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the para, para position at CHS.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All who are in favor?
Aye.
Post, stay. Motion carries four zero zero. Superintendent's recommended budget. Want to do the budget first or the summary, uh, summary first? Um, or is actually the first thing is the...
Well...
I didn't put it in a specific order. You can take it whichever one.
I clicked the recommended budget. Is this everything? Okay, so it started off with the salaries. Do we have... Would it be easier to go with the summary first, and then dive into the budget?
I think that would be the way to go.
Okay.
The budget summary.
All these new things appeared from this afternoon.
I'm sorry?
Said, "All these new things appeared from this afternoon when I was in."
They get them at late, so you can't really...
It's been, we've, and, and Mr. Markowitz can speak to this a little bit more later, but we've had some glitches with, uh, the software.
Yeah.
We believe that it is not the ghost or gremlin of our former business administration,
Mr. Gordon.
but that it is in fact, a system switch to, uh, Windows eight.
Mm-hmm.
That has, uh,
It's not compatible.
garbled up some of the code. So we have been spending relatively long days trying to determine what things are being pulled or not pulled, and where it came from, a lot of time on the phone with the, uh, tech support people. And we believe that we have the, the data in, uh, pretty good shape. With respect to the memo, uh, as with last year, the strategic drivers, math program instruction, math instruction, uh, technology, and then facilities and safety, a little bit more description to what we, we mean by those things. And under monitor, special education and performance assessments, all three schools are involved in, in, uh, a performance assessment initiative. Total budget requests, significant changes, uh, grants and federal funds, one sixty-five through thirty-five. Food services, small decrease, and general fund, an increase, uh, I told the board that we would try to bring in, uh, a minimal increase this time. And general fund increase of, of only a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So total all, uh, all funds, a decrease of two forty-nine, ten, ten, but that's also taking into account the, uh, decrease in, in debt service of three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Mr. Markowitz, did you want to go through the salary, these, and benefits?
Sure.
Please?
Sure. Salary, as you can see, the salaries and benefits, this would be your object code one ten three of one eighty, which includes all your, uh, related benefits right through to, um, professional development. Uh, there is a, an increase of, of five hundred and seventy-six thousand, six eighty-six in the general fund, food service, a decrease of, we actually have a decrease in our salary line in food service, five one seventy-four, and the grants, uh, federal funds actually decreased as well, twenty-six, six thirty-one. Health insurance, uh, as you've heard before, the guaranteed maximum rate increase that we will experience from this current fiscal year to two thousand and fifteen is eight point five percent for both the HMO and the point of sale, uh, point of, point of service, um, health insurance program. That will equal approximately a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollar increase if we are in fact, uh, given the guaranteed maximum rate increase. The, the overall cost for, uh, the district's cost for health insurance in, uh, in total is, is over two million dollars now. As you can see, there are some new and expanded positions there as well. Uh, the LMS, uh, special education teacher, and there are four para educators included in this budget, two at GMS and two at CHS. Uh, food service, we experienced a, um, a decrease of, again, it's related to the, uh, salary line of three, seven seven four. Uh, some of the highlights of the, of the general fund, I gave you just a kind of an overview of, of some of the, uh, key areas. Obviously, you can see that the largest is in the business section, which includes the, the bond, uh, interest and, and principal reduction, step down, if you will, of, of, uh, of the three hundred and seventy-five thousand, uh, three hundred, approximately three hundred and seventy-five thousand, which equates into approximately twenty-nine percent decrease. Uh, and you can see, I won't go through each line, but you can see some of the highlights of, of the, uh, the difference between the two thousand and thirteen and fourteen budgets.
So the, the teacher to meet the IEP requirements of the student moving up from GMS to LMS, what happens to the teacher at GMS that in theory was...
Still, the need is still in the building.
Okay.
It's, we talked it over, and, um, this position is similar to the one that was, was reduced. We lost some students out of district a while ago. It was a middle school program that was a little more intensive in nature, and we have been able to retain those students in district at GMS, but as they age and move into the middle school, we're gonna have to offer a little more intensive supports if we're gonna meet their needs in district.
Okay.
There was, overall, non-salaries and benefits, I know, a decrease in sped and sped transportation of about a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, which was pretty much masked by increases on the salary side. So out of district placements went down significantly, and, and out of district transportation. On the flip side, more resources are required to keep them in district, so it's been pretty much a, a trade-off. That number's in the same number that I, that I saw as of noon today. So, uh, as of noon today, the two together were about a savings of twenty thousand dollars, uh, over the year-to-year average.
Now, how did, um, last year, we added, um, someone to the sped salaries that was supposed to save us money in the end? Did that in fact happen?
The intent was that, uh, there was a student in particular that would stay in district that would, that would more than cover the cost of that individual salaries and benefits, and that has happened.
So I, I want to understand what I think, not what Trish just asked, but what you said before. So if you look at everything except food service and grants, your recommended budget compared to last year is up or down?
I don't know. I've not even, I've not seen the salary and benefits.
Oh, okay, because I keep seeing total all funds, total all funds with different numbers, and it just wasn't clear.
Yeah, and, and...
And there's not a total at the bottom.
What I have is, is not counting salaries and benefits. As of noon today, the total change was, uh, an increase of about thirty thousand dollars year-to-year on the, on the functional side. Sorry, seventy thousand dollars year-to-year.
An increase of seventy? Does that include the deduction of the bond?
No.
Okay. So it's really a decrease of...
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out. If you take everything and you throw out food service, because it's self-funded, and you throw out the grants, there should be a bottom-line number. And I was trying to look through the, the document today, and it, it didn't, I couldn't find the line in the time I had to look that said, "The total for the general fund is up or down," because that's what I was trying to drive at.
Okay. I thought that was on the...
It, it's probably somewhere in there. I just...
I don't see it.
I went to the bottom, but the grants and federal funds was minus two forty-nine, so then I'm like, okay, I gotta come up, and I just, I just, for the life of me, couldn't find it. It's probably there somewhere.
Let me see if I can find it. Let me email it to you.
Yeah, because it keeps, at the, and it keeps totaling general fund, but it's like it's not the running total, which is fine, but somewhere at some point, we gotta...
I'll write it.
Okay.
I'm gonna send it to you right now. The file that you're getting is called Superintendent's Budget Adjustments, ten seventeen, two thousand and three, which is the date that we started putting it together. And it consists of a series of tabs. The last tab is, uh, an overall summary, and then the ones before that are the individual cuts, or in some cases, some, some small increases. If you'll let me know when you received it.
Got it.
My apologies. I thought this was on the...
No, it's okay.
The printed copy was there. So if you want to go to the summary page, so this is before salary and benefits, which is, we've had so much issues with. If you look at, uh, district administration, it's a decrease of five hundred and eighty-nine dollars at, uh, improvement instruction, a decrease of about eight thousand. HR, three eighty. Business and finance went up a dollar. It still decreased overall by about seven thousand dollars.
What a rebel. First year in, he's trying to increase his budget.
Yeah, well, I did it. He didn't, I did.
Yeah, he did. I, I looked at this.
CHS, a decrease of thirty-nine four. CHS athletics, a decrease of fifteen. Building and grounds, and so on, and if you click through the tabs, you can go in and, and look at, uh, each of those in terms of, uh, the detail and what, how they impacted the, uh, bottom line. I'll send you the second document, which is a summary document.
Wasn't sure if it was me or you.
Is that the reminder to tell Derek to move it along? It's seven o'clock.
And the second document consists of a single tab, which looks at all of those smaller lines on a two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, and fourteen, fifteen basis. If you look at the school board budget, uh, reduction of about forty-four hundred dollars, which is, uh, primarily the School Board Association dues. District administration, that deduction of five eighty-nine brought it down to level funded. Improvement instruction, a drop of seventy-nine dollars. HR services, eighty dollars. Business and finance, a drop of seven thousand dollars. Transportation, uh, about a three percent increase. That's really out of our control, uh, having to do with, with gas prices. CHS regular education was level funded, except for the purchase of algebra and math textbooks. So CHS budget came in as level funded, other than that one strategic item. CHS athletics, it, transportation fees, a lot of that stuff is out of their control. Uh, there were some reductions made. Athletic transportation likewise. Now, those numbers are after I backed out the, uh...
Self-funded?
Thank you very much, self-funded. LMS regular education was a drop of seventeen thousand. LMS athletics, for the same reasons, up. It, it is ten percent, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars. GMS regular education, a decrease of almost eleven thousand dollars. Special education, non-salaries and benefits, a decrease of, uh, one seventy-one. Uh, new and expanded positions, uh, the ones that were in the proposal went to the board, total of a hundred and thirty-three, two nineteen. Uh, computer instruction, single biggest area. Buildings and grounds, so they're up about fifty-two thousand. Buildings and grounds up in each of those areas to try and, uh, uh, address some of the things. Uh, there's twenty thousand in the GMS building and grounds for, uh, the area that where students are unloaded. And I, if you want, I can show you what...
Oh, that's in front of the thirties building?
Yes. One to this side, one to this side. If you see the, uh... Mr. Miller?
Yep, we got...
Maybe if you can see where, where that sort of walkway is sort of etched in.
Yep.
So the issue is, okay?
Yeah.
Mr. Moore? So the, if you look and see where that, that is, when students are dropped off in the morning, or, uh, picked up, especially dropped off in the morning, cars pull in and line up in front of the thirties building. And, um, Mondays are worse than any other days. Monday morning's worse than any other time. And the drop-off is difficult, because what they try, have to do is, from the curb in front of the, of the thirties building, there's an uphill. So the, the, the ground runs from the top of the curb up on a slant. So as weather gets bad, as it gets frosty, then as it gets snows, there's no sidewalk for students to walk on. So what they have to do is have a line of cars, and each car pulls up and empties up past that big spruce tree, and then the students go in the cafeteria side door. And so it becomes a backup of traffic that sometimes backs up and impedes the road. It also means that, as you can imagine, through the two or three months of winter, it, it's slipping, there's no place for them to walk. So this sidewalk would run basically from the, the left to right of the thirties building and the extended property, and would allow five or six cars to pull up. Kids would be able to step out of their car and step onto the safety of a sidewalk. Right now, they step up one car at a time... Right now, they step up one car at a time. They can't step off the road surface because of the snowbank that's there from the plowing. So when trying to make decisions about whether to try and, and prioritize the Crescent and try and, and fix that for thirty-five thousand or this, both the, the principal, the site manager, and Mr. Bennett all identified this as a higher safety concern because of the number of students. Uh, it's only a, a serious risk for a short period of time, in terms of, you know, three or four months, especially with bad weather. But they felt that there's worth, it would, this is where they, they wanted to, to try and prioritize for student safety. Um, back to this, uh, District Line Building and Grounds is up twenty-four thousand dollars, but that fourteen is for, um, the new mower, which is ten years old. So, and I think the other major purchase was turned into a repair rather than a purchase. I'm not sure. Uh, so the overall subtotal of the non-salaried and benefits was an increase of seventy thousand dollars. Debt Service was a decrease of three sixty-three. So that meant the overall net, not counting salaries and benefits, was just under a decrease of three hundred thousand dollars. So that was, this is what I was hoping to achieve with the budget on this side. I think we're still gonna be able to do some good things educationally. But we've been, been trying to pick the most important things to spend our money on, spend them wisely, and try and, and, uh, you know, maintain a lower cost of, of ownership at the same time. The first, uh, I'm assuming that between now and the next week, you'll have a chance to go in and take a, a little bit of a, a deeper look, if you want, at the individual reductions. And if you have any questions, you can email me. And that next week, we'll come back. And if you have any, uh, proposed budget adjustments, we'll go through it, budget by budget. And I've not been involved in the salary and benefits conversation. I, my time has been exclusively on this side of the House and on, uh-
I just forwarded to you, um-
Interesting filing.
A general filing report, um, that has, uh, has all the object codes on it, but, um, you can see, if you were to open up, two thousand and fifteen budget, it has the total salaries increasing, uh, and, uh, two, three hundred ninety-seven, eight, eight sixty-seven, two oh six increase in, in salaries. Some of that is the addition of the special ed teacher, as well as, um, rate changes and, um, new hires, um, that occurred throughout the summer. That may have been higher than, than budgeted. Um, you can also see the, the parent monitor salaries going up, one fourteen, four, four twenty-two. Um, and also the, there was an increased substitute salaries, which is based on actual last year, uh, cost, went up twenty-three thousand dollars as well. As reference, the, uh, the health insurance, which is the biggest jump, um, in the two hundred object column, uh, hundred ninety-three, nine twenty-eight. That in, that is not only the eight and a half percent GMR increase, but that would be your open enrollment increases that happened in July of this current fiscal year. And also, uh, any, any life events that allowed anyone to make changes to their health, health insurance program.
So that's assuming staff constant and elections constant this year to next year, which is what we've done in the previous year.
Correct.
Yep. It, it's cost out on the current-
I know you, we can't do anything else, 'cause you don't know what anybody's gonna do.
What's gonna happen. Yep.
Yep.
And if we were to receive the actual rate increase from, uh, the health insurer, we would obviously go in and make those changes if it happened, if it occurs quick enough and early enough in the process.
We are still seeing some salary creep in special education. It has, it has slowed, and we think we're in a better place. Um, we are retaining more students in district. I am somewhat concerned at the, at the continued increase in the number of, of pairs. And based on my experience in other districts, you will find that over time, um, pairs can creep up. But as this, as an effective system, integrating students into regular classroom instruction, uh, becomes more proficient and, and teachers are better supported, that you have to really monitor that need for pairs. And over time, it can be reduced. We're not in that mode yet, but we've, we've certainly decreased the rate at which it's increased. And I was hopeful for a little bit better situation than this this year, but we have had some, some specific situations. We've had more, more, uh, success. I think the special educators and regular educators are working very hard at this. It's not a, a, a Litchfield phenomena. Um, and I do believe that, that, uh, in general, the, the level of service and support, um, that students are receiving is, has, uh, uh, improved. Certainly, the, the surveys, uh, from parents were, were returned at a higher rate and, and were relatively favorable. We still have a ways to go, we know. Um, and, uh, that's where we are with that. The health insurance is what it is, um, as the single largest increase in terms of the area.
So Derek, how do you wanna handle changes to the budget? I know in previous years, we submitted spreadsheets to Michelle, and she ordered them such that if two people were in the same area, it was at least comparable. Do you wanna-
It seems to work well.
Have it done by Monday or something, so there's time to... Yeah, Michelle's like, not Wednesday!
That's too much time. She works better under pressure.
That sounds good.
She's gonna hurt me.
And then we'll review it next week, and we're supposed to have it to them by, what date are we supposed to have it to them by? Brian, do you remember? The date we're supposed to have the, uh-
Fourteenth.
To the committee.
To the budget base, fourteenth.
So we have to finish it up.
So we finish on the sixth, and that gives-
Gives an extra week in case we tweak stuff or-
Yep.
Well, I mean, we kinda have to have it done by the eleventh. You'd have to be done by the eleventh in order to-
Right.
Have all the changes in, and then-
Right.
Oh, we approve it.
Print and compile.
And then you get it back, and we, yeah.
So we also need the salaries for next week, too, right? Or we have the salaries?
You'll, you'll have this, yeah.
Okay.
I, I guess that's one of the questions I have for the committee as well, is how would you like the reports? I know last year, there were a lot of reports. How would you like for us to present? I mean, for instance, we could give you, uh, a salary and benefit report, all the one hundred and the two hundred object codes. We can give you a, um, report for each school excluding the one and two hundred salaries, so that you see operationally how much money is being spent at each school. We can give you an athletic report. We can, we can break it out. I, I wanna find a way that it's best for you folks to, to be able to look at the reports and, and understand and be able to interpret them a little bit, maybe.
I think normally, we get one report that's broken up by each school and then district wide, I think. Maybe special services, too.
Yeah.
The report we usually get.
Hmm, I don't remember.
I think it's usually one big file.
I looked at it last year. There were a lot. There were, yeah.
In the past, it was, um, broken up by function.
By function.
Eleven hundreds, twelve hundreds, thirteen hundreds, and you made your determination based that way.
Steve actually gave it in, in every format. I'm not sure.
If, if he's watching, I'm not being unkind to him, but he-
I mean, for me personally, the, the, the most useful format for me is the format in which the original budget information with the budget managers came out. Here's GMS instructional, here's-
Yeah.
We'll do it that way?
Steve, I also used to do it as an administrative tab.
Not like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just like that one thing.
You can see, yeah, 'cause you know each school. You know by school, by function somehow.
Okay. So we'll give it to you, similar as Dr. Cochran said, the way it was presented by the budget managers to you. And we'll give you a file that has the entire, uh, breakdown of, of all salaries and all benefits for all, all district employees. That'll be up tomorrow morning. And if you have any questions on, or if you want additional reports, just give us a call or flip, send us an email. We'll take care of that for you.
Okay. I have a quick question on technology. Um, under the technology summary- Is a bullet point for, um, development of a BOID policy? And one-to-one computing and portable teacher technology?
Yep.
Are those just strategies, or is there actual cost involved with these that are in the budget?
No. No, that's where we wanna-
Okay.
To, to be, as opposed to the, the, the development of the policy. In order to get to one-on-one computing, actually, I was talking with one of our, our math teachers today, who's implementing a fair amount of math, uh, and starting to, looking at potentially doing some, some flipped learning, uh, before Christmas, where actually students watch videos on particular math, uh, techniques. And so that serves as a lecture, and then the classroom becomes, becomes practice. And individual practice and group practice, in terms of students working together collectively and the teacher acting as a resource. So instead of instruction in the classroom and then practice at home, it becomes the instruction at home. And then supportive practice. Because if, if you go home, if, if you're working in a math class and you don't get it, and you go home to practice, my advice to students was always, if you think that it, that you're not getting it, stop. Don't try anymore. 'Cause you're just learning bad things, and it's gonna take me longer to undo it in class the next day. Flipped learning does reverse that. And so, uh, uh, but that, the ability to do flipped learning is premised on students having individual technologies or pairs of students and so on. So whether it's iPads or tablets. And so in order to move in that direction and take advantage of, of that opportunity, we need the policy. We have the, the technology in terms of the wireless in the building. We're still working on things like, do we have enough access points at the LMS cafeteria? Because when there's a staff meeting there, you have thirty-some people all with laptops, and it overloaded the system, so we added an access point. But if you think, if you walked on a campus anywhere in this country at a college, you would see virtually every kid with a laptop. And I have yet to see a kid with a laptop here at this high school. Why would they? There's nothing to access. There's only a handful of people who are doing anything in terms of providing resources. One of them's sitting in front of me now. And, uh, Ms. Corbey uses Edmodo as a, uh, learning management system, which is a, in the stripped version, a free product that was purchased by Pearson Publishing. You can, strangely enough, pay some money and get more services to go with this version. At the point at which Pearson bought Edmodo out, um, they had about six hundred thousand students enrolled. And you're enrolled in the same way that a student information system enrolled. You have a school or a district, and you have teachers associated with students. That functionality is in some of the more robust student information systems that are there now. It's not a full blackboard. If you're doing a master's degree somewhere, you know what blackboard is like when you go on and all the instruction is there. But the pieces that we have to get in place, the technology really is the easy piece. Then we have to have students and teachers be able to communicate when they're not together. That includes, so that's where the, the, you know, the teacher technology piece is coming. Strategically, we have to get back to a point where teachers can reasonably expect to be able to access and be able to post stuff. Um, I really look forward to the day when, when, you know, a monitor report for a special ed student or a student who's struggling isn't having to write a whole bunch of things out and hand it to someone, where you log into the student information system and you click a button, and all of the students' grades since the last report get dumped into the, the, the report. The teacher writes a two-page summary, hits send, and it goes to the parent's email. They get timely data. It, it, you know, the, the students' grades aren't updated, updated every two weeks. They're updated to the minute. As soon as the teacher hits enter, the parents can see it. If the parents wanna say, "Look, I know my kid," like I was, "Anytime my kid gets a B, get under, get under a B," I wanna email.
Set an alert.
My grades would have been Bs, instead of the somewhat different letters that I received throughout high school, just because I know that my parents would constantly know how I was doing. That functionality can also come with a learning management system. And at, at, at virtually no difference in the, the subscription costs to what we're paying now. So we're paying a, a normal subscription cost for a less-than-normal functionality. But all of these things work together. The teachers need the technology. The teachers need the, the system. So we need, you know, the portable technology for teachers. We need some sort of system of integration, whether it's a standalone Edmodo and a standalone student information system or a merged system. And we have to, uh, develop curriculum and instruction that uses those resources. And then decide what's the next step. At some point in time, it becomes break even. We don't need to provide sets of laptops, and we don't need to provide as many computer labs, because kids have their own technology. That's still three to four years out, quite honestly, and that's, that's an optimistic situation. But the more nodes of people who are, who are moving in that direction that we can support, the more we'll be able to make that transition well. And it can be done in a, in a, in a break-even basis, cost-wise. It can extend the learning day. It can engage students more in ways that are meaningful to them, while still holding them accountable for rigorous learning. So that's, that's where we want to go. That's the vision that, that I think we've tried to communicate. And I will be working with, uh, the Director of Technology, and we are putting, we'll be putting a team together to look at student information systems. We should be able to fund that transition. Hopefully exclusively. We did not put anything in next year's budget for a transition, if we're able to move through new state, uh, student information system through, uh, E-rate monies. So that's what we're hoping for on, on that side. We've also spoken to principals, lots of people who would be able to, uh, uh, be involved in helping us make some recommendations about which system and what are the attributes that we think we need. And also, uh, putting together a committee on the five-year strategic plan for technology use. Anybody who knows anything about where technology and especially where educational technology is right now will tell you that a five-year strategic plan makes no sense, because we have no clue what the technology is gonna look like at five years down the road. But, um, it is a state requirement, and we will do it. But the goal would be in this next five-year plan that, that, that by the end of it, we would be doing some significant one-to-one computing. But the one-to-one computing is all around student learning.
Okay. I just, but when I started, I didn't remember seeing anything in the budget for it, so.
No, I was just trying to, to capture more, more of a vision piece.
Yeah.
Uh, rather than, here's what it's for at this point in time. So I apologize for not explaining that more fully.
Can we also get, uh, maybe tomorrow or something, so when we're looking over everything?
Mm-hmm.
Um, the LMS special education teacher, in the past, I think we've gotten like graphs that basically show how many teachers are, how many special teachers we have right now per student face, like the ratios, basically. I guess we have the current ratios and then what it would look like next year with, with the new teacher, maybe.
So that longitudinal spend data?
Basically, yeah.
Spreadsheets?
Yeah. Now, we can see, you know, right now at LMS, they have thirty students per teacher. This is-
Yeah, we've never done it by, by school, but we could.
Okay. By school would be good. Well, I've seen it like per grade, 'cause like, GMS, I think there's one special teacher per grade, so they know. At least I think it's on that way. I'm assuming LMS is the same way. So we can see the impact this, this teacher would have.
So can we do it by school and grade?
Yeah.
That would be helpful, because then you'd get some sense of-
How it's gonna impact.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyone have any other requests before we?
The mentoring program. How many years does someone have a mentor?
Good question.
You know, it's designed for when somebody new comes into the district. I'm just looking at all the people that are listed as getting a-
Five hundred dollar stipend?
A five hundred dollar stipend, which seems like it's gonna be more new hires than we might expect next year. I, I know there was a program that was set up, but I, I thought it was a one-year, you know, you come in and you have a mentor for a year, and there's specific things that are supposed to happen.
My impression was that it was one.
That's what I thought.
I will verify.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Sure have a lot next week. Said I'm sure I'll have a lot next week.
Oh, yeah. All righty. So, um, will you send us the, the template for the spreadsheet? Is that who, you, you know who gives the spreadsheet?
I'll send you the-
Otherwise, you'll get five different ones.
I know. I know.
She's had it before.
And I've sent them, and I still get five sometimes.
Yes. So- Yes. Is this your first year?
Maybe you should send the sample with the...
Basically a spreadsheet. Just go through, write the...
A template.
The, uh, the code down.
We've seen it during, like, the other last year.
'Cause I know people cut and paste the different...
Yeah, I kinda said, "Well, I think this is... And then I had to put my little notes to explain."
Trish had to put her translation notes.
Look at the rate schedule. That's, that's the same one from last week or is that a new rate schedule?
No, it's the same one, I think, last week. Yep.
Um, non-LEA and administrators?
Provided this to the board to give you an idea of the staff and administrators that are not affiliated with the collective bargaining agreement. There are ninety-three total positions and as you can see, twenty-five of those positions, I put at the top of the scale or at the, I guess more accurately would be that they're, the top of their range. So they would not be scheduled for an increase for fiscal year 2015. And I gave you the total salaries that those twenty-five positions represent. Then there are sixty-eight positions that are scheduled per the adopted salary range for each position. Given a, uh, moving those forward to fiscal year, if the, if the board were to direct us to do so, would impact the budget by thirty-five thousand one-one-six or those ranges would increase those positions to a total salary of one million two oh two nine, nine oh four total. And just to give the board an idea, if we were to take the current fiscal year fourteen salaries for those ninety-three positions and move them one percent, as you can see, it would, every one percent is approximately an eighteen thousand dollar increase to the, to those ninety-three positions.
I find the numbers are different.
Which one?
So, oh, 'cause it's only IC. I was confused by the eleven sixty-seven versus the seventeen eighty-five. It's 'cause seventeen eighty-five has those twenty-five top positions.
Yep, yep. And then as you can see for the administrators, our current fiscal year salaries is one point, uh, one million, one point two eight. And just to give again the board an idea, I understand there was a five thousand dollar increase pool that represents four tenths of, of one percent of that total amount. And it, for every one percent increase, would be approximately eleven thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars, one percent of the administrator.
How many people are in that range, do you know? Or how many, how many are in that pool?
How many does that represent? I really didn't break it down. I did it by lines. I did this after. I can get you that information though. Yep, I can get you that information. That would just by categories represent all of the SAU administrators.
Principals.
All your school administrators, your director of IT, your, uh, athletic director, special ed director, yep.
Guidance director.
Guidance director.
Yeah, I think it's like twelve people.
Yeah, I think it's twelve to fourteen. I'll, I'll break it out for you tomorrow. And I'll, I'll send it on to you.
So we'll have to have a decision on this next week too so that they could, we could vote on it and then put that in the budget to be approved for, what is it, the sixth, eleventh?
Right.
Okay. My inclination is to put the step in. When was, what do we, last year they got one percent cola?
One percent no step.
One percent no step. The year before they got a step 'cause it was default budget?
Yes.
And the year before that was another one, it was frozen?
Zero, 'cause it failed.
With zero step, one percent?
No. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, nothing. Not meaning zero percent, but zero step one.
That pool should be fifteen altogether. Six building administration and nine athletics, sorry, fourteen. Athletic, special education, guidance, curriculum individually, business administration, HR, building grounds and math and technology at the top.
Fifteen you said?
I'm sorry?
Fifteen?
Fourteen.
Fourteen and four?
I counted guidance once and Devon once.
Okay.
So that's how we got to fifteen.
So I had asked Dr. Cochran, um, after looking at what was sent out about the step one percent, about a modified step potentially for...
Oh, for this?
Non-LEA members, where we would drop the lowest step and add a step.
I totally misinterpreted that question.
Yeah, I was just, I was reading your email and I'm like, "Okay, I, I agree with what you sent me. That's correct, but that's okay." If we could just see that at some point for comparison.
When is the last time we adjusted that?
I mean, in theory, every time you do a percent, you're moving the scale a little bit. And as long as I've been here, we've never dropped and added a step, which would be seven, seven years for the non, for the non-bargaining staff. And I just wanted a cost comparison. I just wanted to be able to look at it and say, "This is a better thing, this is a better thing." I just don't, I realize it's probably gonna be more expensive 'cause everybody moves.
In your summary, did, did you have a statement in there, Frank, that said that nobody's, the percentage of people that are at a top step for those that are in sour scale?
Twenty-five out of ninety-three, almost a quarter.
Ninety-three at the top step.
Yep, so, yep. I have the detail on it as well. I can send it on.
And, and I know they all have different gaps.
Right.
They're, they're not all the same. In some cases, it might be forty cents if it's an hourly.
This also means that if the board members have spare time and nothing to do, they can read a perfectly useless email that I responded to this afternoon.
I apologize. My request was rather brief.
Well, and I saw the, the non-LEA up top, but didn't put one-on-one. I put one-on-one together and got a half.
By the time you read the email, the non...
Just gone. What was left of my memory, so my apologies.
No, that's okay. I actually didn't expect you to have it tonight anyway because it was this afternoon, so...
Any more questions on this? Any questions on the manifest? I'm gonna have you out here by eight oh seven, first pitch.
I probably need to sign that, given that John isn't here at some point. Or Frank will chase me down.
You'll miss the first pitch.
Yeah, no, you'll miss the first.
I'm gonna miss the first pitch anyways.
You're gonna miss the first two.
Unless you're inviting me over to your house.
All righty, no questions on the manifest? Okay, call the gun club.
Definitely not beauty. Good evening. A couple, a couple of comments. I'd like to commend Dr. Cochran for having quite a bit of courage here for taking the, or proposing anyway to cut the New Hampshire School Board Association dues out of the budget. Interestingly enough, I've tried to do that several years, even at a deliberative session. And it's met with, with deaf ears and loud mouths. But I, I absolutely see his point. He's, he's a very accomplished person and understands that he can probably do without it by using his resources effectively. He's got, I'm sure, um, my point is, is it, it, to me, the amount of courage that that takes is immense and it, I, I respect that very much. He also mentioned something, I think he called it flip learning in math. And interestingly enough, I think, I'm gonna speak for everybody, but kinda honestly, that's how it used to be. We get sent home with, "This is what tomorrow's lesson's gonna be. Go home and try to figure it out." And, "Oh, by the way, you'll practice yesterday's lesson for homework, but you're also going to try to learn at home so that when you come to school tomorrow, we're gonna work and teach you how to work those problems." So, um, that makes me feel really good that, that that's what we look to go back to. 'Cause quite honestly, that's how we came, you know, that's, that's how we progressed as a people is, you know, is, is actually learning, right? I have a question. The, I believe you said there's a freshman coming up that is gonna need a pair up here and that the need will still be in the building at LMS, which is very different than a GMS.
GMS and LMS.
Okay. Which is true, but didn't answer my question at least. Is it an IEP-related need or is it just another need as in? Okay, so it is tied to another person. Fantastic. A couple more things with regard to health insurance costs. Yeah, they go up and that's because we provide health insurance policies that are very expensive. So that rate of increase is always more, and again, I liken it to servicing your car. If you cover oil changes, brake pads, you know, window washer fluid, if that was on your insurance policy for your car, it'd be mighty high, right? Myself, as, as a, as a taxpayer, I would expect that at a minimum, it'd be comparable to what the general public pays for in the manner of copays, in the manner of deductibles and, and out-of-pocket expenses. I think you'd find that instead of spending a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars in increased healthcare costs year after year after year, which go to no education, it's, it's just a, it's just a benefit, right, which we all enjoy? But the point is, is it's not, uh, it is inside the educational bubble, I understand that. But when you're really looking at hard costs, that's where those costs come up. And there are creative ways that the general public via HSA contributions or whatnot can reduce those front-end costs, provide for, you know, solid benefit packages, but, but are more in line with the folks that have to pay for it. And so when a contract does come up for the teachers' union, people aren't looking at it like, "Are you kidding me with that? Really?" You know? It, it, it kinda speaks backwards to people going, "Okay, it's fair." You know, but when you're looking at increases plus these huge benefit costs, it, it makes it very difficult to support. And we all would rather have a solid teacher's contract, right? So that's the areas I'd look in. And something simple, but, you know, we were talking about stipends for mentoring. God, where in the world does that happen? I'm not a fan of stipends. I mean, maybe if you're a coach and you're coaching and, you know, you're getting paid to go coach something 'cause a coach would be paid anyway. But mentoring, you know, these are the kinda things that add to the cost of contracts, right? And, and this is what makes it expensive. Because really, it serves no place anywhere in the world. I mean, who gets paid to mentor your, your people? I mean, that's leadership. That's what you should be doing. Okay, so I'm just trying to think outside the box in terms of how to reduce the overall impact of numbers towards, towards a contract. And then I, myself, I'd like to see, 'cause it, it wouldn't be fair to give increases to non-LEA or administration as part of the budget rather than have it being on a warrant article. Because the teachers have to have it on the warrant article every single time, right? And so in my opinion, you put it out to the public just like you would, just like you do to the teachers. And, you know, let, let folks decide whether or not they should, should not get a raise or whatnot. Because it, it, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's fair that you take one group and say, "Yeah, we'll give you one percent" or you'll change your range or do whatever, but you don't do it to the teachers. The teachers have to suffer the consequences of going on a warrant. So for me, that's just fair. Thank you.
Robin Corbille for Nessmouth Court. I guess after sitting and listening through this meeting and reading the notes from last week, my thought or caution or plea is that I hear a lot of talk about positions, programs, needs driven by IEPs. And what I hear is those are legal obligations that we have to meet for those students. I understand that. We also have a moral obligation to the other twenty students sitting in that classroom. And I caution them, we're making budget cuts, that we're not forgetting about our regular ed students who are not legally protected in the same way that IEP students are, our gifted students who are not legally protected in the same way that our IEP students are. And that we take into consideration some of their needs and, and look at that in our budget so that it's not just about what we are legally bound to do for the students in Litchfield, but what we are morally bound to do for all of the students in Litchfield. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, can I get a motion to enter non-public session under RSA 91A 311 for A, the dismissal, promotion or compensation of any public employee or the disciplining of such employee, or the investigation of any charges against him unless the employee affected one has a right to a meeting and two, request the meeting be open, in which case request shall be granted. B, the hiring of any such person as a public employee. C, matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the body or agency itself unless such person requests an open meeting.
So made.
Brian second? Yes?
Yes.
Absolutely.